I'd like to call Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Burgrow City Council in Salona. Roll call.
First call.
Here. Here.
Two plus, Shani Cunningham.
Here.
Paula Dittmar.
Here.
Three Brad here, Chris Powell.
President.
Doug Douglas here.
Before we go to the public comment, you'll see a new business, we're gonna take out the resolution to approve the new rental due, but we all gonna exchange it, I handed out some papers on the agri pain pain. We did get a, an offer on it, so we're gonna move that into the D slot and speak of it there. Any public comments? If there are none, we'll move on. If I can call Mr. Reed up to the stand, he's gonna talk to us about the discussion of sidewalk lines and maybe another option that the city can take.
I'm gonna start with jokes, but I didn't know you'd record this. Yes, I talked to the mayor, well, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, about some options, I think it had a developer come and was looking for some options around just straight up cash bonds. And so I talked to him about that we do offer through our best bank, the standby letters of credit. And that is basically a way for us to be your security in that. And that developer can keep his cash, be using that, not have to pay interest on it if it's on a loan, a construction loan, that kind of thing. You don't have to manage it either, but we stepped in, we underwrite the developer. And we make a deal with him, and then we issued the city a what we call standby letter of credit, which basically says if the, if that developer or someone defaults on you on the, on what was required of that letter being sidewalks, you know, trees, anything really, that we step forward and hope that. Because we basically, it's essentially like us getting a loan for that developer, he just never draws on it until he doesn't perform. If actually, so, but I've had Michelle with me, she's our, from our national department, and they're the ones that handle those for us, so I'll kinda let her give you the details of that, and then if you have some questions, she'll be glad to answer those, but.
Good afternoon, if you don't mind if I ask you something, you pretty much covered everything, but I personally like to consider this stuff, so I'm gonna do it.
And Michelle, we're hanging it out because this is why they moved to the city council, so about two months ago, we had a representative from another development that came in to request us to change our stance on cash bond. So the way it works, you know, the city, you know, you give them to protect us post, oh seven, oh eight inception, where we had developers leave, and then our city ordinance would apply as sidewalks to be built, but we were left on the report, so we had to pay for those sidewalks to be built on the backside, and it cost us a, a good bit of money, am I correct, as far as the formula that I'm running with here? And so what we did to protect ourselves was to make the developer come to us prior to the development and per your laws, we know it's gonna be this much sidewalks, and then you have to cash bond, so in essence, you give us this, if it comes up to be eighty thousand dollars, and you put that eighty thousand dollars in our bank account, and as you build the sidewalks, we refund you money, we don't get anything, we don't have no interest on it. We just hold it in case she was to run off, we have the eighty thousand dollars, or whatever the price would be to build the sidewalk in the end. The developer came and requested if we could find another way, because in essence, they could take that money and put it into a different development, and that way they can keep on kinda getting a return on investment, but then, it's just us holding that money for three months, six months, a year, whatever it be. In the, in the essence of us in the city, what we worry about is our protection. Well, that sounds great, that you want your money, but we wanna be protected, and which brings us to all of us standing in front of this today.
Yeah, so like you all mentioned, my name is Michelle Rumsch, I'm with the International Department. And internationally, probably things like, what are you doing here, talking just about standby letters of credit? Ninety-two percent of the business we did last year was domestic standby letter of credit exactly like this. At the very bottom of the page, you'll actually, I listed a lot of municipalities and surrounding areas that regularly use our standby letters of credit, because just like that contractor requested, it's kind of become standard with working with utilities, sidewalks, freeways, I live in Bellevista, they're very important to us, we have lots of standby letters of credit, making sure those trees live. So it really, what it does, it provides you the protection, so if something were to happen, that project did not fulfill, you could draw on that letter of credit and get reimbursed for that, to either hire another contractor or find a different way to go ahead and complete that project. It is a mechanism of default, or I'm sorry, that's, it's a, I've just totally switched that. It's not a mechanism of payment, you don't expect them to default. When y'all enter the contracts with these contractors, you're not saying, hey, do this project, but I don't think it's probably gonna do it. That's where we come into, we do our due diligence, we make sure that they're good contractors as well, and it is loan based, so we do have that loan in the back. So if they do default, we have that money. We have three business days to pay upon that, and what actually makes us more advantageous than bonds is you're not required to show pictures or prove, or have people come in and submit that and say, hey, look, there we go. All you have to do is write it and say, hey, they did not fulfill the contract based upon what they agreed upon, so I need to draw this letter of credit. It makes it easier for y'all to get paid, it's easier for them as well, and allows them to retain that cash that they can keep doing business. So it just makes it a little bit harder, I mean, the economy's kind of crunching on everyone right now, and having to have all that money to satisfy, it really kind of is advantageous for them. I am the representative for Arkansas, so if y'all want to work on a letter of credit, I am the person that you can talk with. It is just an application, I prefill it for you, I'm sorry, you guys will be the beneficiaries of the contractor. I manage all of that, so if y'all were to have a problem, you would let me know, you'd work with me, but other than that, Carvest takes it from there. So we work with them, we have that contract, we underwrite it, we have a team of documentary specialists as well. They are the ones that actually craft the letter of credit that I would present to you and say, hey, does this all look okay? Does it meet your requirements, is there gonna be missing, do you wanna adjust it? And if you say, yep, add this, we'll take it back and we'll adjust it. You can completely customize this, so if you already have a contractor in line, you say, shoot, before we've done business with them, is it too late? If not, we can cater our letters of credits specifically to that contract, but we can also give you a draft before you even go into business with them, if you just wanna see what it looks like. So with that being said, happy to answer any questions, I've got the nuts and bolts on here.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Yeah, first, whether the, either costs associated with the letter of credit are carried by the contractor themselves. So there is no cost to the city.
Is, is there anything on the contractors' end that could fault that letter of credit, let's say he passes away, let's say he goes bankrupt, anything like that?
So.
For us, it's weird. Be good, three months on, good.
That's because if that.
From our standpoint, if a Gary Collins builds a sundown subdivision and dies a year later.
Which is basically, essentially, we are underwriting, so we will underwrite that transaction with.
So even though he's gone bankrupt, he's passed away, it's.
From an international perspective, that loan is already in place, but I love that he looks at loan right to international from a contract, that's still in place. The loan part, it's a cut or two, but it, that they would still be, I don't know if they would be able to, their beneficiary, it's dependent on how their business is set up, but it would still be there.
Is there anything that the, that holds the city at any point in time during this process, actually, let's, let's say we see their contractor has gone to fuck, or left, or sold to somebody else, can we just say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and do it and build all these sidewalks and cash that in at that time?
You would, yeah, well, you have to submit documentation to us that it's a pay, according to the contract, they were supposed to be a A B C D, they haven't, or they're working on the letter of credit.
Obviously, they sold it to somebody else, they need the responsible.
Yeah, so we actually have a letter of credit that we're working on right now, where they have property and it's sold to someone else, and then those individuals didn't fulfill their obligation, and so we are pursuing that, so even though it's not the original, it's the contract that's set in place, it was bonded, or that's what the contract.
And just to bring all this information, we talked about this before, the city used to accept construction bonds as part of the process. The problem is when we had a recession, two thousand, two thousand six, two thousand seven, is we saw subdivisions just totally shut down for ten years. And by that time, bonds had expired, and then one day, anybody would fall back, I don't know, because it's a big, a long part of it there, so.
And these, these do expire also, it's coming after.
That's a great question, so it's completely customizable, you can put in auto-renewing clauses in here, so let's say you expect it to take three years to fulfill the project. But we can go ahead and write and say, hey, ninety days before the expiration, we'll reach out to y'all and say, you still need this letter of credit, and you let us know. Don't actually, they concluded the project, or yes, it looks like, you know, things are slowing down a bit, so we can make sure that renews as long as we need it for.
And you work with the contractor a lot, you.
Correct, yes.
Have you ever seen any problems if we did have another recession, if things basically stopped for eight years, like they did last time?
Truthfully, most of our letters of credit, it's rare that they are defaulted, so they're usually not drawn upon, so I don't expect that, that it wouldn't be y'all's problem if they are drawn upon, so.
We're gonna watch.
Does it transfer if they sell, do they have to come back? The new buyer, like if someone sells that subdivision or middle construction, does this transfer over, or do they have to come back, the new buyer, and then do that with?
It's based on the project, and so if that project transferred again, then that reason, that we work with them as well.
We had that reset.
If we had someone finish the project and do the final flat, and then turn around, and they have to do the annua, while people didn't get the final flat, then they turn around and sold the entire subdivision to the developer, so that's. So would that change with this?
And this, and our loan is going to be, well, there's multiple ways we could back it up, but say if it's sundown or subdivision, there's a chance that I've taken that mortgage on the sundown subdivision as my collateral for this. So when they don't perform, we pay you, and now I've gotta get my money out of this subdivision. So, yes, it could go south, and that's gonna be my option.
Have, have you seen in your experience, or has it been, has it been many, or have it been many, or any at all, that you have given a letter of credit to for whatever period it took to pay?
I have, I'm sure it's happened, because there's, yeah, and there's some, we're gonna.
If they can't get one, well, then they would move back.
Yeah, if they're, if we're not comfortable with their credit, if we're not comfortable with their collateral, then yes, we're not going to drive the leverage, and they're going to then be subject to your cash bond. Unless they find some deals to do with it.
And personally, I wanted to tell you that we decided not to be bored of dating a loan, and there was actually a conversation that we were surprised, that's a lot, that they're advertising.
I wonder if. Something in the past, not recently, but I remember a simple thing.
Yeah.
Are you good with this, something like this?
Not only concerned with being on the bookkeeping side, but you have some subdivisions that had the fault, and then the others would have the cash to live with. And if somebody did the fault, or was not allowed to get the fault to the bank, then Christine would still be doing her bookkeeping and and securing the cash bond to pay out that root.
And just FYI, just usually on an individual basis, you're still gonna get individuals and maybe even small contractors that wanna pay the cash and have the city building it, we had that.
That, that leaves.
They put the cash up and we build.
Right.
We cash it, we build it.
So we're on a business. We have a contractor on site, and we have to put the cash on.
I think you just need to give us direction, Parker. If we do the two, and four. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to amend the order.
Yeah. That's something very interesting for still.
It's looked like a lot of other cities are trying it, and we've, I mean, we've had a contractor that, or then it seems, maybe we're still getting the security that we're, we were looking for. Not getting stuck with a bunch of sidewalks.
It looks like we washed our hands of it.
I was gonna say, the only way the letter of credit goes away is if you guys release it, or if you let it expire and say, hey, we don't need it anymore, so, yes, you do, you wash your hands of it.
Well, somebody will have to be real diligent when they issue these to make sure that everything we want to see in it is included, so it'll be part of that process.
My question is, and I'll let y'all, but, so this gets out and priority or make a available, or something, I don't even know if they do it, that another man comes in, is that where, are we limited to our best, or is it, here's a list of lenders that we, if you don't wanna put up the cash bond, you're good, you're waiting, nobody's. Like, that's not creating any disorder bias or anything, if we.
I think it's up to the contractor.
We would just set the guidelines for the letter of credit, and then they can pursue whoever they want.
That would be up to the contractor.
We might just, be like, kinda like, this is where we prefer, but if you wanna go by your own, we'll do it.
Or we.
We just have two options, you can either give us a cash bond, or you can go get a line of credit from a.
We do have one other option, too, they can build the sidewalks upfront, none of the choose to do that.
Mr. Parker, the, the potential amendment to the ordinance would be not exclusive to our best, it would be more general, just accepting this, so. So, so I would, I would avoid the preference or any of that, it's just very general, right? Right, from a financial institution, it's their choice, yeah.
You wanna change this motion?
Yeah, we would probably, there are certain financial institutions that local governments aren't allowed to bank with, so we're probably limited to somebody on that list.
They would have to have a certain set of guidelines in there, that automatically will take like that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's Chuck, what I think we'd wanna spend some time to, to have you think through, what are, what are those things that we would wanna have as that guideline? But, yeah.
I think at a minimum, you're gonna want your city to turn your location.
Right.
I'd be happy to send you an application of what we would propose to a contractor, and say, hey, I'm working with the city of Curry Grove, I'm on a letter of credit, can you help me? I'd be happy to send down, before, just what we would recommend as far as the auto renewal and things of that nature.
So, do we wanna do something either, y'all wanna wait the next month?
All we need is direction, if you want us to go ahead and amend the ordinance, we'll have a.
Yeah, I say we take it to the next step and just come back with the amended ordinance and take a look at it.
Okay, same thing. Thank y'all very much.
And look, that brings somebody to help.
Moving on to the approval of minutes for the April seventeenth meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
In a second, Paul Davis, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, both same sign. Approval minutes pass. If you notice, you haven't received your treasures report yet, which, we got our last bank letter of basic statement today, so we didn't have time to put it out. And so we'll move that to next month, and we'll keep both next month, Christine says we'll have it out to y'all when you leave.
This happens when the meeting, or this early in the month.
I believe we have any unfinished business, so moving to new business, we have a resolution to amend our police policy. And I'll let Chief start with that one, because I think it's pretty deep, and what you want to do, right?
Yeah, there, there's actually three, three changes. Move this on, since it's, it's, we did this one, I really wanted to hear if we put in the news. Y'all have to refer to it, so. There's nothing information on, on reading for real quick, but actually, the benefits in a patient area policy, you know, honestly, if you did follow the police department, the patient area policy is probably the biggest one. Where one of the last agencies to implement that policy, kind of, I told it, which stole it from Washington County. And we, I wanna make a few changes to really make it pretty strict on, you know, on length and proper member, there's actually even more doctors in there. Some of the larger departments like Fayetteville, literally, they said that increased their recruitment for the ones that, I mean, the governors, or they have a, what, a trend beer, or, or. The world of challenges that they face, they're, why not, will, will be nice and neat, and they do look special, and that's, that's something that's really good as a policy to keep it not look like ZBOP, or undercover officers, or none of that, so it'll, it'll be supervised and maintained, I believe, and we'll, you know, see how it works out. Any questions on that one?
What's the other one?
And moving on to the benefits, there's actually three changes in there, one of them is there's certificate pay, and there's a higher level education certificate that officers can get, you have to have X amount of years, and you actually have to. They're forced to obtain all of them, a more bachelor's degree or higher. So it encourages officers to better education beyond law enforcement, the training that we're required to do, get college education, which I think is very helpful, bringing into the department. And we've been doing that for a few years now, but, but, you know, the authority, when you can see a lot of stuff, you just put it in policy. So there's no budget requests either, or asking for money for that, it's already been budgeted, into the budget as we normally do the last few years. It is placing the back to the policy now, and list, you know, how, how that's paid out, and how you paying, with the education departments, they're paying those, so. That's for the certificate pay, there are multiple certificates, to get the final one, you have to have X amount of years, and you know, if you've got a bachelor's degree, it still takes you about five years, and a bachelor's degree, and X amount of law enforcement training, there are two of those, so. I mean, it's encouraged, it's gonna be higher level education, which is what we want, so. The next one is the FTO certificate pay. So, many agencies do that different, Fayetteville does a one percent pay increase up to H certificates, up to the eight percent pay increase on top of everything else you hear. It's a federalized certificate, you know, there's DR engine, drug recognition expert, there's, you know, fire instructors, all kinds of structure. FTO is unique, because when these, when our officers are in FTO, when they're FTO officer, they literally train new recruits. Or, right now, our program is about twelve weeks, so, barely for twelve hours a day, they've got somebody sitting right next to them, and it's, if you take a twenty-two-year-old who's just been out of school, put a gun and all this responsibility on him, you can imagine. So it is perhaps what changes their routine, their shift, you know, taking when they may run home and eat lunch with the family, now they're not, because they're, they're training new recruits. Literally watching everything they do, so what I just did was allow them, and what I requested was a dollar an hour increase, and I got with Ms. Kelly, and we looked at different opportunities, figured out the one percent. Being so small with us, we're not gonna be FTOing, you know, constantly like some of these agencies, so it makes sense. So how it's worth is, they would only get that pay when they're physically training the new recruits, so they wouldn't get that. You know, if they're FTO officer, they're not getting additional hours every day, only when they're physically training the new recruits, so it's intended for those offers that are doing that, so that's the second one. And the third one, which was a big one, you know, in the world of police, in the world of any kind of recruitment, I think we could offer from the bank to the everywhere, it's just hard to get, do quality applicants in any field anymore, so, you know, doing what I do, we look around other departments, steal their ideas, see what they're doing, and try to, you know, use what's working for them. You know, the better, it may work for us, so it was requesting a bonus, a higher bonus, obviously, there's some other stuff in there, you can come down and learn how much money you got, and where we're at. Typically, when I hire police officers, they're gonna verify this, it, it takes the leap of faith, getting back to the door, when we got the process, we got any background check, you gotta come to the physical, you gotta do the psych eval, you gotta do all this process, even if you can get good applicants, so. Our thought process may be offered, it's made, and I hate to use the word steal in my own departments, we're open to bringing certified officers. There's probably, we hire, you know, an uncertified, twenty-one-year-old, you know, they go to the academy, they've seen all the movies, and they think, you know, you know, you chase the bad guys, and just run a hundred mile, all that good stuff, they go to the academy, they get out, they start getting a feel of it, and they realize this isn't like the TV shows, they don't wanna do it, but at that point, we've already spent, invested all this money and time, and then, that we're out. So you can look at it multiple ways, so the hope is it'll, you know, the office may be able to bring either better recruits or certified officers from other agency. In the past, the last, probably pre-COVID, it was typically pretty easy, we didn't be able to manage it, or applicants. The last four years, it's nearly impossible to bring in certified officers, so, so, all that kinda, throw it out there, so.
So what was the last ask?
What was it?
What was the last, the last ask you're asking, the last thing you're asking for?
For the, for the bonus.
Hiring bonus, okay.
Up, up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and I looked at the number, because also, we're not paid, they do ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know, then McDonald's does five hundred dollars, and other places do it, so. Obviously, I don't think, we, we don't have the funds, and we don't have a hundred thousand population, but we still gotta, and that's the hard part with us, because we're, you know, we're six and a half, seven miles from Fayetteville, the twenty-two-year-old don't care about, about self, that he's gonna go, who pays the most money and the best benefits, so. In that number, we look at, just trying to come up kind of a midway point, so.
When we talked, you shared a little bit about the, the timing of that payout of the bonus, did you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and, and as in the policy, it's, so, if we get a certified officer to bring in, so you get the twenty-five hundred dollar bonus or whatever it is, after they're at FTO, you will be much shorter, they'll receive half of that, if they're in good standing, and then a year from their hire date, they will receive the rest of it. Providing they're in good standing with the, with the agency, so. And if you really break it down, look at the numbers, even if you pay somebody twenty-five hundred dollar bonus, they let them a year, I mean, we, we could go back many, many years, with all the people we paid, it's been six months training on only that they're gone anyway, so.
What is the, is it up to your discretion on how much they receive?
Well, I, I, that's what I guess we'll be sitting down with, with Larry and the mayor.
Yeah.
And looking at where we're at, and typically, a lot of that money would be coming to the council, saying, hey, we need X amount of more money. That's if, if, you know, we're short, and we have a paid officer, you know, four weeks or eight weeks salary, we'd have X amount that's already approved. Depending on the timing of the year, or, you know, if we have an officer waiting, saying, hey, we'll, you know, wait X amount of time, replace him, and have that money there to, to.
We did, we did discuss the budget this year, whether or not any of this is gonna impact the budget, like most years with the police department, he's already had some positions that have remained open for some period of time.
Over five months.
He's already to the point where none of these changes that we're gonna make tonight are gonna affect this year's budget as far as a dollar amount. Now, we'll have to look at it next year, obviously, when we budget for next year, but he's already saved enough in having, not intentionally, but it's worked out that way by having open positions right now, so.
And that's how we wanna use the discretion, so in this case, now that we have an opening, if we wanna go for a certified, we could potentially go up to a twenty-five hundred dollar bonus. Because Chief has five months of reserves sitting in his budget that he hasn't used.
Because he can have the point of the decision, right, okay.
But if someone quits tomorrow, then you barely have zero in the budget, so Chief either has to hire without giving a bonus, or he would have to, well, and spend six weeks, and so now I can potentially get a thousand dollar hiring bonus to get a certified versus a uncertified. And then he would have to come to us, not, not us, city council, but myself, Mrs. Kelly, and Mr. Orbridge, to say, should we use that money to try to incentivize, or should we just go uncertify?
And, and hopefully, you know, I mean, they're changing the world, I mean, there's been a time where we missed overrunning the police actors. Last, I think, every, you know, about every business or company, whatever it is, it's just a struggle now, I'm not sure what. Part of it is, you know, if you get, there's nothing you can say that they will or become higher, they must, or will or shall receive that bonus, so you're saying an auction maker that we can do and bring it forward to the council, to approve that.
So just ask, you're asking Chief, what's the difference of a non-certified applicant and a certified applicant, cost difference of training and. No, just training.
It's, if, anytime we send somebody to hire, that has to go to the academy, that is twelve, thirteen, three months, and we pay full salary, benefits, gas, food, uniforms, all expenses, often, the city does not see them from liabilities, and we don't want them out on the street doing anything.
Right.
We don't see them, so we're paying three months full salary, benefits.
That's probably getting you four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that leads, and then we, we've had them get, we've had two over the past three years, one of them was within a week of graduating, didn't pass the academy, and then we had one that just realized, no, it wasn't for them, so.
And that was on the, the last day, the second to last day.
Actually, the very last day of the academy, so.
So you get one certified, you don't have to do all the training, obviously, and, so you just, they can just start up with a psych eval, physical, and go.
Yeah, and if, if they're already certified employees somewhere, we, we can standard such all that information. Yeah, we, yeah, and if, if they're already certified employees somewhere, we, we can standard such all that information, just roll right over. We still go through the FTO program, you know, getting all the streets layout, city ordinances, from whatever city they're coming, that's a much, much shorter.
Gotcha.
Training.
So we're talking like a ten, eleven thousand dollar difference of, of non-trained and a certified officer, right?
Yeah, so, um, and, and, you know, we've even offered for non-certified, maybe train even better than that ten, that it will be cheap, not as much as the twenty-five, about a fifteen hundred. And of course, we send them to the training and they leave, we can, we can build that agency, we've done that in the past, we've got a year and a half and we can build any agency, so. I mean, we're, we'll get set.
Pro way.
Yes, yeah, almost. But in the first year, we can get a hundred percent, you know, and then it kind of slowly chips away and goes down, so.
But chief, is the amended policy written as a not to exceed twenty-five hundred?
Yes, and, and that's what I put it, I figured if you, if I didn't want to leave without having a gap, it's like, you know, you, you don't want to have something ridiculous. But if Fayetteville does ten thousand, I'm not sure what's bringing up, other agencies are, are jumping on this, well, I mean, the police agency, I think, like I said, you know, I've mentioned McDonald's, but um, even their, even the convenience stores are wanting to do that, try bringing them, so.
So the non-certified would also receive a bonus?
Yes, we can, and we can figure out what we, it wouldn't be, uh, as high.
Right.
But the, but the most is, like I said, that brings in better qualified candidates. Um, and, and it, and it may not work, we may do this and we still end up with, um, but I think if it does, and we can bring in cert, especially certified people, and that's a huge, um, and it's a huge cost statement to the city.
I think it could be a good tool in your toolkit to, to hire.
Just an additional, yeah.
Yeah, and I even submit, even for, for Chuck and the city as a whole, I mean, and I don't know, he's true of everybody, you know, the fire department, um, force that in dance, comes out the money, and we've got that money to the officers, so.
Yeah, we'll just have to think about it the first of the year, when we have the next budget cycle, what that looks like.
May encourage the larger pool of chief.
Well, you do the same, similar to one of your C D L drivers and whatever. My, my only concern is I don't like that y'all are picking the higher bonus amount. Like, to me, it should be twenty-five hundred dollars or not. Because my concern is you get two applicants a month apart and one day you're in a whirlwind mood, you're like, okay, he's getting the full twenty-five hundred, and then a month later, the same person, same experience comes in, you know, like, oh, well, we're gonna give this one eighteen hundred. And to me, that seems like a long.
And I, and I think that's where you might put the max, twenty-five hundred, that probably will be with all the shoe that's at large. Um, and park remains, see some issue, people are just in simple worrying that maybe we changed, but which I don't have a problem with that. Um, when I, I think the wondering if that, if things are real tight, we're, we're, we're pretty close, we probably do maybe fifteen hundred. You know, if we've got excess, we could do the full amount, but it may be better just to offer just what they said a minute to be for a certified.
Would be worth it, do like certified officers, twenty-five hundred dollars, non-certified a thousand.
And if the money, if the pool's not there, then it's not there, but.
Just, just a thought, though, if you had somebody that just graduated from the academy last month and had one month experience, can you get in the same?
Well, that's a, you put in a criteria based off of either certifications that they have, experience, but I think that needs to be clearly defined and them to know that when they are offered.
And typically, we do that, and it was part, you know, the certified officer, if they've got X amount of experience, start them at the, the higher level, because of experience and, and the training, so.
No, I, I, I would break everyone else, I think it should be simple, I can look at this, but definitely some defined expectations before the number, yeah. If they receive that bonus, will it be contingent that they stay for a certain amount of time?
Yes, for a year.
Okay.
Yeah, and after their training, they'll receive half, if, while, because they, they're long there, maybe good standing, then a year from their hire date, they're just never ending.
This may be a dumb question, because I know Arkansas and that will work, so can you sign a non-compete disclosure of officers?
Well, is it?
A non-compete disclosure of officers, can you have one of those?
As far as just?
Like, you can't go out and get another area or concert bar, you can't have you hired at that area?
Bonus, um, I'm not sure, I know, uh, right now, we send them to the academy, it's statewide, so if they go anywhere, we're gonna, and within that year and a half, they can build whatever agency comes back, um, so. And the only, the only other issue, there's, you know, part of the book, you know, I know the state of how we current employees bill, you know, they hired somebody six months ago, now we hired somebody today. You know, or just, I, I've got information, they would much rather have an employee on shift instead of being a short-term learner, or more for two or three or four months. Um, you know, they, and it leaves them short, so, um, and it's, that whole other, you know, officer safety, so they would much rather get good employees as well, good partners. Much sooner than being short and being that, not the most.
So, so Larry's just brought something up to me that me, we may want to put this off of mind. Um, that by making the bonus contingent, you, you get your first half after finishing well, for uncertified, first half after finishing the academy and field officer training. And for certified, after they field officer training, and the second half after they've been here a year. That may create an employment contract and get rid of our at-will employment status.
That's what I was asking.
Units of excellence actually enjoy. So we may need to look at this and see whether we can do this. We may not be able to say, you guys stay here.
Yeah, because that will.
We may have to stay as a hiring bonus.
You can have a hiring bonus, you just can't have any strings attached to it that would imply it's a contract. Because that's an implication of the contract, and that does weigh with your at-will status.
But another way to consider it would be retention bonus after the first year, if you're hired and you stay here.
Could live here.
You can do that as long as it's not manic, you know? Right, so it's, it's the same consideration, but, uh, you know, Chief and I talked a little bit about, you know, from a, a retention of other officers, I think that's something over time, we need to continue to think about, uh, also, I like retention, that is, along the same way. And you can, you can market it the same way to do recruits, uh, we have a retention bonus after the first, if you stay here, here's what, uh, what that bonus works out, you know? And that's, that's one of the questions. And you gotta, your, your correct language matters.
Right, yeah. And then there was one other thing. He, he was adding in his, and I talked to the mayor about it because it affected the other personnel policies that we amended last month, unauthorized leave. We said, you're terminated, you have one business day, request an audience with the mayor to beg for your job back. He wanted three, and I talked with the mayor, and we both thought, yeah, three's probably a more
reasonable.
Reasonable period of time, so we were amending the city's personnel policy, uh, the fire department personnel policy to change that one day at three. So that all, all our personnel policies were the same on that issue. But I think, let's, let's play with our language here a little bit and bring this back next month.
Yep.
If that's all right?
Yes, that's good.
Can we give the department heads the understanding that if they have it in their budget, that they could look at this as well? Yeah, for, like, if, if Chuck has it in his budget to do so, and we need a sanitation driver, and we.
If we want to do that, I'd suggest we go and introduce personnel policies for next month. It needs to be in the personnel policy.
Right.
Because that, that's where the auditors are gonna look for it.
I mean, originally, that's what I noticed, if there's a citywide policy to, to do something like this, which I think would have been all the world.
I just, I, I hope you have, like, raging success and Chuck real jealous and wants, so.
They're, they're always like that, at least the department, you know, fire, I'm saying that.
That's a, J C, I can see him that day.
Right, grass or sirens, check it out.
They get a yellow vest.
Right.
I agree.
Station code are all under the, uh, personnel, um. Can we do that with the other ones or just push this one off? We have the, since it's the same policy, the same, for the other changes.
The accent, should we change the B E A T policy tonight, but?
Well, there's, there's fifty, the FTO with its fifty pay and the, the, this is the hiring or retention was always the, the, the policy.
I was gonna vote.
Do you need them the next thirty days, or we FTO win anyone?
No, I mean, we, we, well, we, we had an officer leave, so we, I mean, the benefit was this, whenever we do, you know, put out the, the add to hire, um, uh, we could, you know, whenever it passes, we'll also mention it, because, um, if not, we'll just push it off another month, so.
So I mean, if, if, if you wanted to pass the others, we, I mean, the resolution is to adopt the policy that was attached, we can amend the resolution to say, we're taking out paragraph thirty-four from two thousand, or policy, what is it, policy three zero zero one? Yeah, the benefits policy, and we'll bring that back and possibly the same thing with the other personnel policies.
That's three zero zero one?
It's policy three dash zero zero one. And it's paragraph thirty-four is the one that, uh,
The hiring bonus.
Is talking about the hiring bonus. So we can just backsize that and adopt the other changes.
So I'm making a motion to adopt the other two policies excluding three zero zero one.
Paragraph thirty-four.
Paragraph thirty-four.
Second. I have a motion and second, all of Vegas, say ah. All opposed, say a sona. Motion passes.
I have say, yeah, I have say, I didn't say, oh, I'm sorry, I, in my life.
I thought she started this over here.
All right, y'all, we're gonna move on to city ordinance to approve the front row reply of the Shayla Meadows subdivision. Is that what this is?
This is Butler Road, if you know where Mountain View subdivision is, which is behind the Billy Joe Park property. Uh, this is directly across the road, uh, the streets actually align, the street coming out of Mountain View, so aligned with this one. And Lake Hurry with Craft and Paul here.
Is this the beginning of the U?
This is not a thing of the.
Is it a Thayla? Yeah, that's, thank you, I just.
Thursday night planning commission meeting, but they have agreed, uh, in between lots twenty and twenty-one. To stub out a road over the property line for future expansion, so if this ever develops up here, there will be a road stubbed out here.
And they didn't lose any lots, we've borrowed and submerged all the way across the property, so adjacent and bordering property.
So now it would just be a stub right there, and, yeah, okay.
There, I mean, we had a lot of comments about that and whether we actually wanted connectivity or not, um, there's pros and cons, we think of both, but we do think that Copper Hill will have a road all the way out to the bypass. Uh, well, we, we know that was gonna be a requirement that we have of them. So what we will need to decide with, in planning commission, and from y'all, is if we want this to be a standalone subdivision or not. But they said they wouldn't lose any lots, and they were fine with stubbing out a connector, so we went ahead and had them put it in, that way we were.
And, and the disadvantage, just so everybody will know, the disadvantage to having that connectivity to the next subdivision is they lose some of their privacy within that development, a lot of people love to live in a subdivision where there's not a lot of through traffic. And you, obviously, if you're connecting it to the next subdivision, you're also adding through traffic.
Right, that's, that's.
And I, I talked with J C, we spoke in that, that, well, Larry just mentioned, we'll be, a lot of people, you get, we'll get a whole lot more traffic if you want to through there, you can have all.
But I think you could maybe pay for having connectivity, and I think make a strong case for not.
So kind of use the, uh, traffic study done from Copper Hill to kind of help us decide, but essentially what this, they're like hoping to be done before, they're well on their way before we ever get that. And so we think that if we happen to leave it as a stub, that's fine, and we don't have to do anything with it, but if not, it'll be ready for us to go.
So we can decide. We can change our mind?
They're gonna stub out no other roads. Any future development to connect.
We've already told, we've already told Copper Hill engineers that they're gonna have more to track. Because of volume of lots.
So this is gonna be an office about.
We also agreed this with the, um, approval that they would widen Butler and expand the utilities, and they were fine with that, but it wasn't ready, I guess, I don't know. Thursday night, we need that.
Sure, we're working together with construction plan right now.
Gonna be one of the construction plans, and they are planning on.
This sort of lift station where you need it.
Yes.
So did I curve and gutter widen my data?
This will serve more than just the subdivision, it's big enough to serve.
Part of this will gravity flow to Mountain View, and then this back corner back here, they're gonna have to pump up to that pump station. But this is actually the most spot for all of this, they got here on sixty-two, so.
With this lift station period, the whole granted.
Yeah, if you get commercial bump on the highway, it'll actually flow to that.
Just making sure we're not in that, like, so, there was a little lift station scattered on.
And they're gonna put a nuzzle.
Now, but it already was here.
Okay, okay.
And most of this is grounded, closed to the town without a truck or a level, or down here, this club and lots, they're putting in a pump station here, but it would be able to serve all the.
White blocks a lot in the right.
I can talk all night, I want to still get stuff, yeah.
I'm just very curious, what are you doing to sustain the biodiversity that's here, like, what plants are you going to, is that part of you?
We're not touching it.
You're not touching the plant or about it?
On site, and we have an environmental team to craft, and then I'm late to craft until, uh, we have an environmental team and basically, they went out there and did a Waters of the US study, I've been burned enough times, I gave the same shit to the planning commission with, um, with the core of engineers and all of the regular revisions where it's just almost impossible to get anything done at a federal level right now. And that's why you're seeing those cases in front of Spring Court and everything right now for Waters of the US, so in this instance, we're just not touching, and we designed the entire subdivision to avoid it. So there's a bomb on the other side, it's not touching the wetlands either, uh, that's driving this entire building.
Hey, Mike, you might let them know about the green space.
Based on, there's just calculation and co, uh, two and a half acres dedicated to our green space, we're currently providing a little over two, there are three, so that net difference we need to pay a fee in lieu of. But there is some green space that is just, the, the detention bond, it avoids the wetlands, it's good suitable land, uh, that will have accessions connected to it for, um, subdivision two.
And this would be suitable, like a neighborhood park, it's small. If it's dedicated to the city, it'll be, but, uh, there isn't anything on this stuff down now, so.
So we're talking about a, a buildable park right here, it's nice, two acres, but then you got this wetland area, what is, oh, is that what it is, okay. So this is all like, it's, it's staying wetland, it's not like a swamp, you know, but.
No, I, I mean, you're very conservative when it comes to wetlands now, or, or everything.
Right.
It's like a small little ditch.
That did, true, okay. Doesn't make any sense, I have a green space, you can't use it, right?
One of, one of the biggest battles ever fought was over ju- just over the term Waters of the US. And this thing went through Spring Court, it changed during Obama, it changed back some under Trump, we don't know what's getting up next year, but, uh.
They should, we should find out next month or so, honestly. They should, we should find out next month or so, honestly.
Okay.
For now, yeah.
Yeah.
Land that's donated for public use as part of subdivision, is the city's the trade and they kept it a lot or make them pay that?
But we're gonna accept it, so. We're all gonna accept it, right?
That would be our recommendation, just because there is anything on that side, and it would make a nice neighborhood.
Good, good, I like that.
We're spending a little quick, or a brief, first reading.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Go, Paul.
Rickall.
Yes.
Ray Carson. Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula De Mars.
Yes.
Bree Greg.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Doug Stonebauer.
Yeah.
And Sue Clark.
Yeah.
An ordinance to approve the preliminary flat of Shayla Meadows subdivision.
Would the person who rules with, they're agreeing about it, say.
Have a motion in second and third. Go, Paul.
Rickall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula De Mars.
Yes.
Bree Greg.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Doug Stonebauer.
Yes.
Sue Clark.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
You're gonna reelect those.
Thank you.
Same way.
I'm gonna move on to item C, which is discussing for the P V expansion. Um, that discussion really falls down to. The lot that's adjacent to our property here. And I've been in discussions with the. The group that owns the, the property. And we have settled at a three hundred and twenty five thousand dollar um. Price tag on it.
And we're talking about.
One point three acres.
Okay.
Adjacent to our property here. I, I sent y'all an email, probably about a month ago, we were hoping to kinda maybe wiggle the price down a little bit, we were, I was trying to do some. Um. Trading different stuff, because we got the little house and maybe you want property and I want land and, and I'll say that we just hit that end everywhere we went. Uh, we did, I did look to other places and so a lot of times when I went out to the bypass. Looked at the, the thing of one seventy sixty two, five acres, five point. Two acres, I believe, or five point three acres. Their, their accent price is two million dollars. Um, we started looking at other lands on the bypass, we talked to the school. About potentially what they were gonna do with their road frontage on uh, the old highway across from uh, uh, Lynn Brexton's church. And they just don't know right now, obviously they're in some, some changeover too. And the truth is, no one wants to sell land that they have. And so I'm not saying that this is our land, but it is adjacent to our property. It's three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars if we wanna buy it. And I think myself, Mr. Oldridge and Chuck can also add in, if y'all wanna know anything about maybe the two ideas that we have. For the expansion, we, we've talked about just expanding. The police department and what we can do and then have that land for further growth. Or just moving the police department out of here. Allowing the courts to expand and then building brand new on that one point three or completely brand new police department. So that is what the land offers to us, it's just whether or not y'all believe the three hundred and twenty five thousand dollar price tag is worth it.
How long do you think that? Is gonna be, the expansion is gonna be. You know, enough for, like, is it gonna be?
Adequate.
Adequate for, like, I mean, is that?
You, you could build, you could build a building on that size lot that's probably four times the size of this.
Just by going up? Or actually just?
Sixty thousand square foot lot, you can probably build a thirty thousand square foot.
With the parking and?
This is six thousand square.
Okay.
Brand that, so, yeah, it goes deep. And you can still, you know, you can build a much wider structure there, because the lot is so deep and still have the same amount of parking.
Okay.
So I, I think it buys you years and years and years of growth.
Okay.
Um, one thing we looked at was expanding this building, you still need that land to expand this building, if you'll notice in the pictures, there's kinda two levels.
Right.
Property comes over and it's up. Uh, what we initially thought would buy a strip of that land, which would give us enough room to expand that way to double their. Current space.
Right.
Uh, that's still an option, you know, uh, an addition's gonna cost you a lot less than a whole new build to start. So I mean, that's an option as well. Um.
I just can't see that one even cheaper.
Either way, you're gonna need that land, you're gonna need that land to expand or to build new.
Mayor Paul, question for you, I made one for Larry too. On the three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, how do we propose that is funded? Uh, is it, is it a loan, is it out of general fund, where?
We, we could probably take that out of the general.
Uh, second question for you, Larry. Knowing we're adjacent or across from the Battlefield Park, there's a historic district overlay.
Yes.
Um, are there restrictions we would be concerned on our construction? I think it was height and lighting or?
Signs, signs and lighting is about all that it entails, uh, and having light shining directly into the Battlefield Park, which we're gonna include that anyway. So no big spotlights that would shine in that direction, uh, signage, there is a limit on the height on the signage.
I thought there was a limit on the height of the building, but not?
Uh, there might be, but it's, it's less, it's two stories is fine, so we wouldn't be going any taller than that anyways.
Did the glass, did all the glass building part stay in there or do we end up getting over there, I remember we talked about it. Uh, no big glass, like solid glass, which we.
Remember, I've done it to the. A bunch of design stuff that we initially proposed, but it was vetoed and it never got adopted. So there's no design standards in it.
My, my recollection was, there was a. Building height and signage and lights, that's my recollection also, we looked at it last year. Well, we, we approved those townhouses and they were gonna be two stories, so I would, I would imagine we could be a two story.
Yeah, I can't remember what the height is, but it's, it, it allows up to two stories, I don't think it allows three, I remember that.
The issue that we've had since I've been here and now since the mayor's taken office, and he's addressed it, is finding buildable property that's within our budget. You know, we have found some places that we really liked and we thought they would be a good fit, but they were just. Too many dollars. And with a too many dollar investment, you're five years man.
Do we know the appraised value of the property?
We have not gotten an appraisal of it.
Who owns this property? He tells me.
Five star development, I believe.
Okay.
Is that right there, do you remember?
So. And I just wanna, I mean.
It'll take months to get an actual dollar figure. That, that he worked through.
And if you're not comfortable, we just go back to the drawing board and I'll go look for some more land. What we have found is that. That's about the cheapest that, that we have run across, you know, it's just a reality.
And I would tell you also, the library we painted off this year, so we do have the option. From a budget standpoint, if we wanted to go get a five year loan from somebody, we probably could borrow five six hundred thousand dollars if we wanted to start on a. Addition, you know, sooner than the next few years.
I did question about keeping them all together.
Yeah, I like it right there.
I think, I think Mayor Paul, it's, it's, you know, if, if we proceed on this is, uh, of course, I don't think it's a done deal, because longer ti- time, we have to figure out with. You know, the fire department, what is long range need to look like, so I think we still. Probably have to keep eye open on uh, appropriate land for purposes.
So, so let me address that, just so everything's on the table, because part of the reason we looked at the bypass was discussions with J C. About how far we needed to go and where we needed to be, even just to have a single truck substation for him. And we all, we all believe. Or at least like where our city hall is, so at least in our hearts, none of us wanna move city hall. We, we like the idea of being at the split at the bypass and downtown and, and sitting there, but I mean, we even looked at. I think it was Captain O'Brien that I spoke with the other day. And he talks about the court system, you know, on a big trial days, there's no place to put people, like, it just wraps up in here, so. We know the expansion for the court. We know the expansion for the police is a little bit more immediate, but it had, it is in the discussions on if we would have went to the bypass. Within the, the value comes to, we move it all, we build afresh and we put a substation for the fire department out there as well.
Talked to your J C, but I, I had an idea the other night that I wanna talk to y'all about, on that, it's made, made work. Uh, for a lot less money than anything else we consider.
Do we have any, so the other station on Little Elm?
There, if it's active and, and, company out here, it's not very. You're trying to run it more.
My. Not to be silly, but. My concern here is the same concern I had when they brought this to develop townhomes. This is the, really one of the last remaining properties that would be a good. Business development that is off the bypass. Is it in our best interest to let a business go there or for us to expand there? That would be, and I understand the price tag is good, but I'm more concerned about. You, the future, and so if it, it means a million dollar piece of property where we could put a whole new. Fire department, police department and everything else, you're probably gonna end up about the same.
Yeah, I, just like, a, a quick opinion is, I don't think. Um, you know, now that it's, I guess it's still highway sixty two up to Battlefield Park Road there. But, you know, from a commercial viability, if a organization came in and they wanted to put an office complex or whatever else. The, the city administration building to me is. Commercial at that point, and I think it's actually a draw. Away from just the bypass at that point to get a return, which then benefits downtown, because that's just a, a hot skip and a jump away at that point. So from a commercial, are we taking viable, commercial stuff? I think the investment that the city would be able to make to expand is gonna bring. Just as much, if not more, commercial viability than, you know, an, another small business right here.
And my question to you, Greg, and that, it'll help maybe piggyback with Mr. Alt saying this, how do we control that? Because I do agree, I would love to see retail now.
Yeah.
We already approved a townhouse.
Right.
And, and so. If we don't buy it. And I'm not saying we, we do or not, but I'm just saying, do, do we have any way of protecting that, that, that becomes retail?
Well, and the other reason I bring that up is because. The first approval was roughly six to seven years ago where we approved the bill for the wine. And then they brought it back and there was a lot of discussion, but um, the city felt like a, we couldn't go back on what we had already approved. And we felt very strongly at that time about. Future development there and what that looked like. And that conversation was solely based on business. So I see, I mean, I, I'm not against it, I just, I know. A year ago, we were fighting for that to be a commercial. Lot, uh, but we felt like our hands were tied based off what we had already approved. And so I don't want a. Low price tag to shave what we originally felt. I guess, I just want that conversation to happen, so we feel comfortable with where we are.
I mean, are there people beating on the door for it over there?
No.
I mean, it's been empty for years.
I, I think you also got to consider that any place that we would buy or build is probably gonna be some.
Our soil law.
People are beating on the door for it, they've been sold something, they've been there by now.
It protected from being residential or multifamily housing that I, it back to that conversation. That doesn't feel real good to have that on that strip, but having a office complex, a city municipal building. Is commercial and it does drive individuals uh, to that area.
And and Chris, just for the city had an offer on that property, trying to buy in two thousand and eleven, so that's how long I consider.
Well, one last comment is in ten years that we still see this functioning as a city building. Want to just miss back into retail space, it does not make sense to me to put city hall, retail space, something in the city. So I think we either need to commit. And then I know that's hard to do, but commit to this location and building it up. Or if we're already thinking split locations, then I'm not sure that's the right answer.
And that goes back to first question, is that gonna be equivalent enough for us? For future.
Not just police department.
Future growth into the whole thing, you said there'd be years and years.
I can't imagine it not being capacity enough for the next.
And is it gonna be weird to just be separated by.
Our long term plan would be to utilize some of the police department as possibly a training facility. With women in the gym from downtown to here. So that law enforcement will be able to just walk next door and have our gym equipment at the end of this building. And no longer downtown by the fire department, or at least make a training room for the police department.
And when we say that, those are just ideas. We've also talked about expanding this completely, so that becomes. Part of the courts and then you have offices for your lawyers and different stuff. So then the courts become these two buildings. And and so that, I mean, the 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 truth is for tonight, though, is just whether or not the the land's valuable. Then obviously the discussions will get really deep on what did we do with the land? And what do you make this out of it after?
After we acquire the land, then we'll reach out to architects, keep their architect role and see. What we can do as part of the footprint, you know, we'll have specialists that deal with municipal building both times. To come in here and advise us on what would be the best footprint, what would be the best for future growth and expansion on that side of the property. So this is just the first step with.
There's a motion tonight to accept buying this property, Parker, that what we have heard.
I have a motion in the second and third.
But Mayor Paul, um, I'll I'll say the obvious, that being a public meeting, are you gonna be able to execute a contract quickly?
So the what what we have already talked about was to meet with them tomorrow. Uh, to try to execute it.
And you've had conversations with him.
Yeah, oh yeah, we we, last time we talked was Friday. And Friday was, I'll have you an answer about Monday night on a yes or no. We have a motion in the second and third. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. And D is. The egg of paint painting, so every one of y'all. I pushed, I put some paperwork in front of y'all and I'm sorry, you can see even on email that I got the. The bid from him at five top PM today, so. Um, here's the short end of it, you have been offered thirty five thousand dollars as is. So the bigger packet will show you the, what was. The appraised value, page nine of that appraised, it's back and front, but you see some highlighted. Marks on that on page nine. Our appraiser set the fair market as is condition at twelve thousand. So as is, is appraised at twelve thousand, you have a thirty five thousand dollar offer on it. If we send it for restoration, the appraiser has the fair market value of that painting at thirty two thousand. So even his thirty five thousand dollar bid is more than what the appraiser showed for fair market value. So let me explain a little bit about it and that's what this other paper where it just kinda talks about some of the things that I've been doing over the last month. And then the cost that's involved in everything that's going on, so. The the appraisal was four hundred fifty dollars, we already paid that. You you see on that page nine where the appraisal was twelve thousand and thirty two. The old Emporium, Greg Brockman is the person in which we hired to try to. Get this stunt off, to get the appraisal done, to to. Kind of be the mediator as far as where we're gonna get the restoration. Currently, our estimated cost to him is twelve hundred dollars. That hasn't been paid, it hasn't been invoiced, I'll call him at five o'clock, post this, ask him a few questions and to get where we were with him. Um, part of his broker fee, if we were to take it, would be a ten percent broker fee, so at thirty five thousand dollars. We would also be paying the old Emporium three thousand five hundred in broker fees. The packing, shipping and insurance. And this is something that me and Brockman has been talking about for the last. We have been, or he has been having a problem getting it insured. As far as the vacuum of sending it to California to get it. In essence, what you see on here is an estimated cost of six thousand dollars, that is the insurance that would. Cover the painting for what is it appraised at, twelve thousand going, thirty two thousand coming back. And it's three thousand dollars for the restoration and that's where we get somewhere around that six thousand dollar estimated cost. Depending on how we send it, that that cost is anywhere from twenty cents to a dollar twenty five per hundred on the insurance cost. So if we believe that it's worth thirty five or fifty thousand, then obviously we can insure it more, but it's gonna cost more than six thousand. Um, so as of tonight, we can keep the painting, we can send it to California for the restoration, just like it was planned. That estimated cost would be around six thousand dollars, we've spent four hundred fifty on appraisal. And we have about twelve hundred dollars in costs and fees to our mediator. The painting will currently cost us seven thousand six hundred fifty dollars, but it will be back in our hand, restored in Prairie Grove. And for that seven thousand plus, do what we want with it. We can try to sell it for more than thirty five thousand. We can hang it in whatever place y'all wanna hang it, you can start, in fact. Just to have everything on the table, um, our our mediator at the old forum said. I mean, I I could even store it a, an art fair, you have a piece, like that's the first thought to having. Something, a reason for people to come to you is to have that piece, so. It'll it'll be right at eight thousand dollars and it's back in our hands. We do have a thirty five thousand dollar offer on the table. Um, our broker stated that he believes that we could counter offer, he had two other clients that was interested. One has currently walked away from the conversation, the second went to still talking but not dealing with the dying mother. And hasn't been prompted to return calls in a quick manner, so. Our broker has talked to this gentleman upwards of fifty thousand dollars. The the thirty five thousand dollar. Price tag right now, then all his offer. Is the as is, he covers everything, he takes it off our hands, he worries about it. He worries about how it's gonna get to California, and if you look at his email to us, he sends us the money before we ever send him the painting. So we're free and clear from that, our broker thinks that we can get more. And when I say more, he just said, I would be cautious to to kinda shoo him away. If you go too high, but he has talked up as a fifty, he has over a hundred of egg of paint paintings. And so obviously he's interested in ours. What what I would think that we should think about is either one. Obviously spend the eight thousand dollars, get it back in our hands, do as we please. Number two, we take the thirty five thousand dollars, we pay off our fees, and even though it's not on there. It would net us a total amount of twenty nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars current, we take the offer, we pay off our debt. We walk with twenty nine thousand dollars, eight fifty in hand. If we counter at forty one thousand, we pay our broker fees of four thousand one hundred, the four hundred. And costs already accrued, the four hundred and fifty already paid for the appraisal, which is at five thousand seven hundred fifty in total. Our net gain after paying our debt would be thirty five thousand two fifty.
Is there, is there a timeline uh, on the offer as a painting?
Yeah, I got it today, I told him that we had a meeting tonight. And that I would, I I could possibly give him an answer by tomorrow, but he is not requesting anything more than is y'all.
One of the things for just conversation sake that I'm sitting here thinking is, I know everybody else here agrees with this. This with the painting that was donated to the city, uh, so to the citizens of of Prairie Grove. I would really like the time to be able to listen to what the community would have to say and recommend. Uh, if they do want to to keep that home, I think it was from the uh, the the women's group uh. Leadership that had donated it back in, back in the day, so there's, what what is it?
It was donated directly to the city, it was stored in the women's club, but it actually, you're not donating to the city.
Right, which is a citizen, so yeah, I I agree, but I would just like to give the. The citizens like us as council persons an opportunity to to ask questions, listen to what others may think. And also the historic society also, to get a good understanding of what they would recommend also. The secondary thing to think about is if we did sell it, and I'll just for easy math say the thirty five thousand. To be able to communicate to the city or the citizen, what what would we do with that money? Cause I think that matters a lot, it's it's not in the scheme of budget, it's not a huge windfall, but I think it's important what we would do with it.
I agree, definitely. Y'all have any other questions? What do y'all, even if we table it and look to next month? My communications with this gentleman over thirty days. If we wanna go hard and try to get more, or we comfortable with the thirty five? And we just wanna say, can you give us thirty days to talk to our citizens, allow us to come back to the table?
How are we gonna communicate to the citizens? First of all. I mean, are are you gonna go in there and personally go knock each one of them and say?
Yes, I would.
Just to your certain few, your clique or whatever.
Talk to the historic society.
Because I think forty thousand dollars in our account would be great and we could do something with it to help the historic society with some of that money.
That's, that that was the other point is being able to say specifically what we would do with that money.
Yeah, I don't think we should hang on to the painting by any means, I mean. I don't I don't like seeing sensitive and all, but it's just a painting. And that's just my opinion.
I think you have to. Look at it in the same as you would look at any other donated. Piece of work, I mean. To me, a really old painting doesn't mean a whole lot, but that doesn't. Mean that that's the same for all the constituents that I want. So I mean, I'm not, I'm, I actually think what Rick said is a good idea, I think we put it out on Facebook, I think we have something. In as many places as possible with a forum making.
We've been a public meeting, we've been, we've viewed the the painting itself.
We take donations and see who wants to reclaim it?
And and then that does bring up the other, you know, question, we haven't been good stewards. Because we allowed it to get stored in a place that it was damaged severely. To be honest with you, most people didn't even notice it, we found out about it by accident.
Just because people didn't know about it doesn't mean.
But the rest of my point is, if we're gonna keep it, we need to be good stewards of it. From now on, do we spend the eight thousand dollars that's necessary, is that good stewardship?
And they would keep it in a police office.
I would say I will say that because. I think we've already started this journey, so we know where we at, so the real question comes, do we spend eight thousand dollars to restore it and keep it? Or do we take our money and run? The the, you know, or restore it, you can see if you get more, but when you think about our appraisal. I don't know that we get much more than than what's offered, so the offer's good. At least that that would be at least belief behind it, when you look at what it was appraised at. The offer's actually a really great as is, it really just comes down to, we wanna keep it and if it is. And I think we really need to take heed to what Mr. was just saying, and then y'all need to start deciding where y'all wanna hang it. How it's gonna be in public view, how are we gonna share this with our citizens? Just spend eight thousand dollars to to have that happen.
Should we take the offer and get a replica? And hang like in the historic society or something?
That has already been talked about with with me and the old Emporium, so I and I'll find out how much that print is. Maybe with bullshit free, but what they do is just make prints of it. So obviously it's not an original, it's just a print of the original, so as far as viewing is. Like you still have a replica. To to share, but.
It's possible we could copy that original newspaper article where it was donated.
And actually put it in the historic society, you know, in the in your museum, what the, what it was, who donated, what's about?
I'll I'll be clear, I don't want any part of keeping. This piece of artwork, however, we've sat on this for a year now and I don't think it is in bad interest for the city. To post it that we're trying to sell it. This is what we're gonna do with the money we're trying to get and we would accept all feedback. I mean, if if I donated something several years ago, or my family did or whatever, and I learned in the paper that the city had sold it for forty thousand dollars. Put a basketball court up, which I mean, that'd be my. However, I'd be pretty upset about that.
Um, I think dumb starting won't be nothing, you know.
My understanding from Mr. Brockman is that this guy is great and that he's good to talk to and that's why he even told me. And if you think you wanna come off, we go counter office, but I I don't, so I'm not saying that to say counter off, but. I think we do have time is what I'm trying to get, if if y'all not comfortable with it and you wanna wait, like I don't think, because I called him tomorrow and say. Hey, we wanna, we wanna a few days, a few weeks to think about it. I don't think, obviously, I don't, I haven't talked to him in person, but. From what I get from our mediator is that I think he'll be okay with that, so you give us, you give us a few weeks to. To to talk about this.
How how would all, how would you all like us to communicate? Uh, I know Lynn had probably had something in her article this week that you want us to do, Facebook posts.
What's, I mean, what is the best way for the citizens to communicate, communicate back to the city? We talked about this a lot back at the current state, what it needs.
You think of like how many people shot this out? Right.
Well, I'm just saying, if if Lynn was in the paper, we make a Facebook post and we have it posted in a public setting. We at least can know we did our due diligence and notify the public.
I could put something together, maybe kind of informational, the one place to buy very few places.
Some kind of art thing, outdoor art, like mural something, maybe that would.
I think that's the communication, what your citizens is, it would be reserved for a future art. Investment or something. That way people think we're not just putting in a general.
Mural, like an outdoor mural or something that this, this, since we're selling art and put it back and that's some sort of power.
I would imagine anything that we do needs to be out in the public. Needs to be something.
Going to reach out and, but we show what you're intending to do with the money, so people don't assume that we're sticking it in the general public.
Well, and like, what are we saying?
Show why we're selling it and they're gonna go back to you. If you're gonna reach out to the citizens.
You're gonna get some people that just want you to spend it in a responsible way, I've been at least.
Well, Paula's not, Paula's whispering in my ear, so I'm gonna throw a little Paula's one to say. That she's worried about whether or not we give it to, how much we tell the community, on the idea of just bringing so many opinions, so then how do we pick?
All that's gonna do is open up a can of worms, people, everybody's got an opinion. But maybe that's, or maybe that is the. To do.
As we communicate this to the public, I think we need to be fairly careful. We can't go out and think, well, I guess it's gonna be invaluable with the offer is, but.
I'd like to see some way that we could keep it and display it at the library, but I don't know if that's possible.
Cost you eight thousand. Or cost you eight thousand, restore it and get it sent to California.
It's got a little corner that's been pretty, pretty damaged.
The the paint's coming away from it in that bottom corner, it's actually pulling away from, the fabric itself is pulling away.
It survives like a year on the on the wall.
It, so it is, I mean, I, this is just my opinion, I'm not no artist by no means, but I would think. If y'all decide to keep it, I think you put the eight thousand in it and restore it, I don't think, you don't keep it in the, in the, cause it. To me, we're talking about whether or not we respect or disrespect the citizens, not all the people that gave it to us. To hang that thing up, destroying is, I think, a probably a bigger disrespect than selling.
I think we should keep it, but that's just me, we um, we love traveling and we go to art places and art museums. And I don't know anything about this artist, but um, I am also a terrible hoarder, so I want to restore this, I want to keep it, I want to. Love it and I want to appreciate it, so that's how I think, I guess.
I mean, I don't think we're. I think Paul's worst fear is happening within council. Right, like we all have different opinions on what to do with this painting, so I don't think it's. In. A good idea to make a decision on it tonight.
You aren't the first council that's debated this.
It's not like it's a big rush.
Trying to find a safe place to store, that's the big issue.
I mean, wouldn't it be nice to come to the citizens with forty thousand dollars, say, hey, we got this thing, we sold this painting forty thousand dollars, what should we do with this forty thousand dollars, guys?
I will, I will say this much, you had a fifty thousand dollar offer that we passed up. Right, uh, prior and.
Call me out.
Yes.
Right, I really know the citizen, a lot of money than a painting. Like, hey, we got this extra money that we sold this painting that nobody cared about.
And just as a reminder, soon when the cable we invited this last time, this. This painting, we found out about it when a art gallery in San Francisco contacted me, wanting to know if we still have this painting. And like, what painting? So just digging around, talking to some of the really old folks in town, we found out that there was a painting in, stored in the women's club. When I found it, it had stacks and stacks of newspapers on top of it. And apparently they got this donation, it been passed around town and ended up there. Uh, we packaged it up in a crate and it stayed in our vest for eight years, I think. And then when our best built their new bank out here, they asked us to come get it, so it's been in the mayor's office for three years. And I never felt comfortable having it in our back building. Just because of, we knew there was a value to it, so. Uh, it's not been on display any of the forty seven years that I've been here, we didn't even know it existed for most of that. But they actually supplied me, the gallery in San Francisco found the newspaper article somehow from nineteen sixty one, I believe. And sent me a copy of the newspaper articles, the only reason we know who it was donated from, which was the family of singer. Apparently he had lived in Prairie Grove in the. So that was his side of the connection.
And I think that's a great story, uh, that's, so it's not just, you know, Chris, the the painting itself, the story and that women's club. There's actually at the museum, uh, they take, kept meticulous notes that we had from the late eighteen hundreds. Uh, of all of their, their meetings that they would have, so it is part of the story of Prairie Grove.
The the compromise might be a print of it. Displacing. But it's not the original, and we used the money from it to do some other art stuff downtown, since we're getting ready to redo most of downtown.
Very nice, but and I do, yeah, I agree with Mayor Paul, regardless, it needs to be restored. And yeah, this may be surprising as, you know, if 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 appropriate, as I would suggest, we send the money to get it restored, we're not going to lose. Money for the citizens, so protecting that, and if we still have. Better negotiation, cause now I have a fully restored uh, print painting uh, of that, then.
I will say this appraisal is as is, so we don't have to pay to restore it.
I would say it can't be displayed in this condition, cause it might.
But this is gotta, he might wanna have his own personal story.
I also think probably we'll need to reach out to our insurance company if we display it to see if they want us to. Uh, get additional coverage on it, if we we insure through the municipal league and I know there's a lot of things they don't cover, this may be one of them, so.
The the six thousand dollars is to ship it, it was the cheapest we found, we will, we will, it's close to ten thousand at one point.
Okay, I make a motion that we. Put this out to the community. In multiple ways and seek feedback and decide at next month's meeting what we're going to do.
Do we, do we need a motion for that, or is it just tabled? Cause really, we just need the motion if we were gonna accept his offer or. You're just telling me what you wanna do. So it's just.
Take take feedback.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second and further. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Do I, okay, I'm sorry. You don't wanna do it as a roll call, should you have it? Reports of committees, sanitation.
We're still looking for a relief driver in the sanitation department that you approved a couple months ago. Um, actually spoke with one of the employees today, I believe he's gonna be a candidate to send to the. Um, actually spoke with one of the employees today, I believe, who's gonna be a candidate to send to the training. And the training will be in-house and he'll do this computer based. He's already said that he would just do most of the training at home. He said he could do it a lot faster and don't need a long time. And he would attend the class one day a week, which will be at our training, at our maintenance facility, instructor actually come. And so I sent the email to the instructor to see if that was still a possibility and I'm gonna get your back for some. But I know that some of the other municipalities have adopted a similar. Uh, training program so that they could utilize employees. It's just like when the police chief has to send somebody off. It costs us four thousand dollars for the school and enough to about four thousand dollars a month for paying a benefit. Attend them to class. And then we don't have an employee here for that time for that duration. But at least this way we would be able to stay around this world and work in sanitation period of four days a week.
Still has to either be comp for that time or pay for that.
Now, instead of people just do it at the, at the maintenance facility, we'll go and set up a computer for training, then he could just say clocked in the evening, so. But, yeah, so that's the way we're hopefully, and if it worked out real well, we could fill that C D L spot in the next five weeks. And at that point, we would just hire another seller. We covered his spot because right now that's the way he does sanitation. But he says he doesn't want to be a throw forever and he's, uh, interested in these driving and then maybe move it up to a lead position later on. So he said it takes a different frame of mind to be able to throw trash every day. And he's been in that department for all over a year. He knows what it's all about. He's been through the heat, he's been through the rain and stuff, so. He's compatible with that position. And with the opportunity to move up to that department.
Hey, before we move to street, I may be a little bit out of order here, but I'm actually one more question about the, the painting. Because we still have the eight thousand dollar. Question of do, uh, do I tell Le Brockman's to send it to California to get it restored now? But do you wanna put it out to the public, wait for thirty days because you, your offer is a as is. Not, not costing us the six thousand dollars to send it. So do we wanna hold off sending it to California? Thank you all, sorry, but I just wanted to clarify that. Street Department, Rick Clayton.
Still waiting on some signage, uh, we have been working with the police department and, uh. The required signage for our school zones, you know, we removed all the twenty mile airspeed limits. And we've got some signs, uh, put up for now, the posted twenty five miles per hour. But, uh, all the signs have been put on back order and we've been waiting for well over two months. And, uh, and so we're waiting on those, but we did recently receive our purchases for our radar signs. So we're gonna have some new radar signs. We got them delivered Friday. And, uh, the guys took them back to the shop this afternoon and during a rainy day, they're putting together. The school actually purchased five.
Okay.
That are the same model and that we.
Oh, we can move them.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got the standard hardware to go with our youth channel, uh, time posts. And so we will be able to pretty much in just about an hour.
Of course.
To another place in town. And so when we have reports of, of high traffic areas with, uh, reported lots of speeders. I know we have some long strideways in town, like sundown and range road, that's where we've had some issues in the past. We get a lady to leave up. Leaving for ninety days and they have software on, so we give us feedback and start logging. Then we have trouble times at the end of day. So we can increase patrols. And then, uh, if we don't get a lot of bad feedback, we can just move to another area of town where people are calling in.
So on the school, do their purchases and are, are we gonna be responsible for moving? Are they, are they, they're gonna be.
Where we just assist them with installing them.
Okay.
Cause we have capabilities to set the posts and stuff for them, but that's be their side. They were just up with the grant and I told them that we've assisted them with installation.
Do you have those places chosen?
We don't have our tickets for our two. The school will maintain theirs and they'll put them where they want.
Do you know if they're going to put one on that crosswalk by, um, sixty P B? I caught myself speeding and I saw, I seen students like waiting for me and I had to like come to a stop. I'm, yes, I'm just saying. I have to literally stop and people, you know, there's.
I imagine a lot of ours will be complaint group if we, somebody calls in.
Yes, we can, like I said, we can move within an hour. So we have a, a lot of complaints with certain areas. Uh, the school zones are always a lot of attention around the beginning of the school year. And then it just kinda goes away, you know, it's architecture patrol and, and, and things like that. But with the school purchasing five of them and then putting them around their campus, they're gonna be so densely covered with the fire. That we will be able to use ours our two by moving to department areas.
So these things get feedback, right? They get feedback on.
They have.
How many speeders or how many?
They have.
They report each speed, yes.
And important, you can go back to look at like how many and then just Chris could put up.
And if you're out there. You get several times a day that you have a lot of issues with.
Okay.
For any of that season, I guess it, it's one for them. Um, you know, a lot of times if you're out in your yard and somebody goes by in a big truck. They may be going thirty miles an hour and everybody, and they're gonna take your seven. So they had issues and then they could collect that, you know, knowing, you know, the fastest that somebody moved in that amount of time. And when the higher. Speeds are, and they are quite, uh, effective. I mean, even, even in place officer twenty years, when I see one, it's like, first thing you do. Kind of like state true, when you're on interstate, you look down at your gas and you paid attention. Our list of the places that is vandalizing, we'll keep an eye on it. I mean, we put down speed bumps. If somebody don't like them, then they're gonna try to find a way, but I think. I wanna shut you off. It's pretty, pretty durable, so I think.
It has a passive mode on it. If you hit it with something with an impact like a hammer or something, it completely goes dead. For about ten minutes.
Yeah.
And then it restores itself back on. So it, it makes you a little.
But they're quite expensive, so, you know, you know, get somebody in and it's.
Right.
You wanna mention updates on the Viney Grove extension and also the discussion we had repeated here about bids.
Tell me bids on the water and sewer, but on the Viney Grove, did we approve that last month, the bid?
But haven't they given you a time for this?
No, we have not got anything back as far as contracts. Don't wait to hear on that.
And then on the downtown construction, we're planning on having bids for approval at next month's meeting, correct?
Yes. Well, I talked with the engineer about five o'clock this evening. About some other discussions that we were having with some evenings and riding ways for downtown. And, uh, we expressed a, a lot of concern about making sure we're going to bid next month.
So there'll be advertising in the next couple of weeks and then hopefully we'll have a bid by the June. So that, that next month is gonna be up to, up to Monstree, it's not be there.
So I know I'm keeping this dead horse, but anything more or less sidewalks in between, on Viney Grove?
No, not yet.
Cause I, I met the new superintendent this weekend and kinda mentioned it through his hearing and said, yeah, let's, let's talk about it, so.
Well, the biggest issue is getting enough right away and moving it back.
Right, and which is.
And the drainage improvement. We have to find out if we have enough materials in house to do that or if there's something we need to order.
So how we, how we do that?
We'll have to get out there and measure it, but right now crews are busy with everything.
I wanna put that, I wanna move this up if I realize. Cause I've been, I've been having three months of four months.
Yeah, I, I really want that.
Okay.
I have another sidewalk. Uh, on Viney Grove and Jenkins, that crosswalk, I think we need to strongly consider eliminating that crosswalk. And figuring out a better. So the one where you turn up on Jenkins. So right when you pull out of your neighborhood, you go straight. I've had several teachers at the school tell us how dangerous it is and kids have talked about, and we, I think we'd have to get.
Want to come to the stone?
Well, it comes up a little bit and then there's two, uh, or there's an empty property. That then connects over into that other subdivision, but there's no crosswalk there, so everyone's crossing. There, but once people get that school out of sight, they hit the gas and, I mean, I know two instances. One just happened last week. I don't know. I know y'all got called on it. Uh, where kids have almost got hit with their parents, cause people just aren't paying attention.
If you move that crosswalk, then what are you gonna do?
Well, it would be ideal to have them walk all the way up and cross at the main crosswalk where we have, uh, Officer Goodwin every morning.
So there's no, there's no sidewalk there over there.
That's what I'm saying. Eliminating that. Cause I think people just don't think of it because you, you're kind of out of the school zone and it's very dangerous.
Water and sewer, duck stumble. Say, so I, I was on communications with the lady this morning, got the crosswalk. And Captain O'Brien has been working on it last week. So, so couldn't win, Officer Goodwin did pull the video and the kid ran off her mom. And so the one that, cause the mom called historical and my son almost got hit. Not to say whose fault or whatever, but the, the kid ran off from mom, ran out in the street and the person that was coming through did do what they were supposed to do, was paying attention. Did have to lock it up.
Right.
But, but it does put a little bit more clarity to. Rather than just the fact that someone's standing there.
Sure.
And then, but, but it is all those crosswalks are an ongoing problem. You can have a, a crosswalk attendant or a cop out there every single day. And that's what we talked, I talked to her this morning and just said. That we'll, we'll go back and go on that little mall and put you in their rotation. And when, really, our patrol guys have been out there a lot, cause they wrote, wrote a good amount of tickets to be, to be blunt about it. And so. Um, and we'll try to do that on enforcement, but she asked that same question on whether or not it can be moved down.
Yeah.
And so then it really just comes down to sidewalks and.
Well, that's, I mean, we already pay someone or the school does, or depending on who's out there in the mornings to kind of regulate that, so it just makes sense. To blow all the kids up through there. I know you can't control a.
And we even moved the speed limit sign twenty five past that.
Past it, yeah.
Did try to, try to regulate that. Last year we did that.
If we knew any, uh, school board members, we could talk about staggered stalls and, you know, maybe, maybe get some of that traffic delayed and all up. One way or the other, but just tossing that out there.
Where is he supposed to be here?
The, the expansion, another way towards plan is staying, uh, ahead of schedule. They're actually doing really well out there, uh. They've got about all the material secured and on site. There's just one or two things outstanding, but it's gonna be. The schedule will be delivered by early summer, with completion date probably the first or second week of December of this year. And, uh, we've added a couple of things to that contract as far as our degrit and fine screen and the headworks. That may push that back to right after the first year, but it's all connected. It'll be operational by the end of the year. And then, uh, the downtown rehab project, uh, crews are finishing up asphalt today on the repair and they'll still be in. On site cleaning up all the gravel, do some site restoration on the shoulders and things like that. And, uh. Then the downtown project, we visited with the engineer last week. And then with the property owner this morning, and then again, a phone call this afternoon, engineers make some final adjustments on it and like Larry said, we'll give a bid. Late this month, early June, or what we can bring with that bid back for the, for the June meeting.
As a short reminder, that's the twenty twenty one bond issue, which IRS regulation says we have to have ninety percent of that money spent by. The end of June twenty twenty four, so we're really pushing that deadline.
Three year window to spend ninety percent of that funding, so. But we've gotta make sure that we get this project started pretty soon because they anticipate.
Is that it, Joe?
That's it for the water and tour.
Call it, recall.
Uh, just really quick, we were down about four thousand dollars. So this last month, the last year was thirty nine thousand six oh three. This year was thirty five thousand three twenty one. Uh, the city's take, uh, is twenty one thousand forty one this month compared to twenty four thousand. Uh, same month last year. But down just a little bit.
Final call, then recall.
Uh, I talked to chief earlier, so I think we got a couple of quick contextual stories to tell us.
First off, I mean, I don't think I'd tell you often how much appreciate the support that you do give, uh, the purpose, what we need and needed. And don't ask a whole lot of questions. Tell a couple of good stories. Well, first off, call volume compared to last year, about thirteen percent, uh, get that out of the way. Uh, a couple of good stories, uh, right on, uh, crew, your crew, my crew, uh. April seventh. Got ladies driving to the fire station, planning a chest thing. She immediately went into cardiac arrest, annuals gone. So all of those stories, Mayor, I've been working on.
I'm, I'm gonna bring that up when you.
Uh, but they were, in fact, their response time was fifteen minutes from the time our crew started CPR before the annuals arrived. Uh, they crew, along with, I think, the police department showed up and assisted. And we did CPR on this lady for about forty minutes. Uh, and this was on April seventh. She came out of hospital May third, she got to visit the fire station Saturday. Inmate later. He was on a little bit south panel. For, uh, another lady went into cardiac arrest. Crew worked on her a little bit. The annuals wasn't announced at that time. Uh, she walked out of hospital three days later. So a lot of times you don't hear such stories, uh, go on. Uh, if you share those, uh, downtown had a, uh, near miss, had a fire in one of the, uh, historic businesses. Tech, the historic, one, one of the main businesses on Main Street. Uh, fortunately, there's a fire, fire, fire that's, uh, shares property running, so they were saying she was rather quick to. Uh, had that happen at ten o'clock at night, that was another story. Uh, those businesses are monitored with alarm systems. Uh, it was just that somebody passed a ride and catching it. And the result wouldn't have been as good. But I just wanted to, let's share a couple of good stories we can say, we'd appreciate. Of course, getting, uh, there's gonna catch was on, uh, two of those three calls. Better crews. Uh, like the PD was on the, the call at the fire station. PD came and assisted us with gunplay, they did, uh. Screened their cars around to give us some block issues, cause at that point. Patient was fully exposed. And, uh, I think one of the officers did get a cycle in and, uh, took the CPR. Four minutes CPR, it's exhausting. Thank you all.
I have talked about this, uh, the twenty twenty one bond issue, which again, he's got about twelve months to spend the money. You've got about a hundred and some thousand dollars. Left over from the fire improvement portion of that bond issue that he's been looking at various options to dispense. So he'll be coming at you soon with buying suspended money.
If there's, if there's any questions that, that Jaycee can answer, I mean, feel free to ask on this one, but. You know, essentially EMS, five years ago, we were paying about five thousand dollars, I believe. Six thousand to them. Um, they went inside of our buildings, answering every call. On a personal level, I think that's very cheap. We were probably, we're probably underpaying them. Uh, we're currently paying somewhere around eighty thousand dollars. And in, in lieu of, they're like us, they're short people, most of their calls are in Fayetteville. And so, um, they have, went to a new system in which they preference Fayetteville, downtown. And so obviously, the other limits, small towns, western Washington County that we represent. It's kinda second nature to them, to be honest. I don't know how else to say it. And we, in, over the past month, between us and Lincoln, Lincoln. Springdale was, had to reply to two of our calls. Um, it is, it is seemingly getting very, I'm just gonna say unsatisfactory. And so I have been raising a lot of noise. And probably causing a lot of problems downtown, um, not distant town. Fayetteville and with, with Chief Harrison. And so I'm gonna encourage y'all, because my last email to, I, I'm the vice president of Central EMS's board. Ernie Penn is the president. It also included Judge who oversees it from Washington County and Chief Harrison. And it was just my displeasure with what's going on and the fact that we're the leaders. And the judge, the captain, the president and vice president, and basically saying, it's not good enough. Eventually I'm gonna have another officer shot and Springdale replying, and it's not good enough. One of our family members is someone we love is gonna have a heart attack, uh, he cardiac arrest in front of. The fire department and their response time is not. the fire department and their response time is not what it was. And on top of that, my very first meeting with him, this was way before we had most of these issues. The truth is, when we get to the end of the year, they go and ask us for more money. And I've already stated to them, we're not in a good spot to be asking people for more money. I say all of that to say that this is becoming a big issue. And if y'all believe the same thing, I would ask y'all to reach out to the Washington County judge and just say that from what we understand and from what we get and services that we get in return for what we're being sent to you guys. You don't feel it's good enough. We're not the only small town that has filed complaints. Um, I'll leave their names and all of that out of there, but, but we're starting to try to circulate it to just say we need a better explanation, a better long-term plan. Because if you're just short people and we need to hire people, then are we going to go back to normal in three, four, five, six months? And then, we're, we're not getting much communication, but that usually happens when you saw it.
It was just writing them a pretty big check this last year. More than, more than we usually.
You gave them extra this past year because they needed extra to get by because of COVID issues.
Blah, 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 yeah.
And then we gave, I made, or we wrote them an extra check to fund power loading stretchers they'll have in their.
And then we also gave them market money.
That's what it was, yeah.
And to fund two additional curvexes that they need. And I asked that question to, uh, county meeting last month. And we kind of sat down and then we got the thing short, about a short, you know, supposedly as soon as a group of students graduate.
There's not in, in the school right now.
It's supposed to fix itself. It's, it's like every business out there, except it's a lot of things.
They had pictures of a bunch of graduates last week.
It, it, and it may get fixed. I just want to tell the way of what's going on. Myself and J C amongst some other small town representatives is causing a pretty big stink. It's not to say causing stink. We want to return on the investment.
That's concerning.
The truth of the matter is, is we're talking about our town, our level, our citizens to not do preference because of something else. And, and to me, it's not good. That's not a good enough thing. It's not.
Christine, just to clarify, we did give them two different allocations, right? We gave them the ARPA money and then we also gave them additional funding last year.
Twenty thousand dollars.
And so we gave them two extra amounts of money in addition to our normal fees.
So Jason, y'all did, y'all did CPR for forty minutes before the ambulance show up?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
Ambulance was about fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Saying that, was there, you know, there were the annuals and the program that went to Fayetteville for some unknown reason. The annuals in Lincoln and then to Evansville, Orange Hall, the annuals in the department, I don't know where they were. And in the past, what's always happened is when one of those annuals moved, they were taking one a little closer to area. Uh, as I said, this time, you know, everything works like it's supposed to.
The short answer is Fayetteville gets, this is one of the chief, Fayetteville gets seventy percent of calls. And since he's short-handed, he has to keep his troops where he's getting the most calls.
Right.
It's a good sales pitch. It makes a lot of sense. But it, it doesn't change the fact that we're paying more money for less service.
That's correct.
And those less services will sooner or later affect someone we love or someone we know. And so, all I'm saying is this is where we are. This is the reality of the life that we live right now. And if something doesn't change, eventually, whether it's us or another small town, it's going to affect someone in a bad way. And so, we, if nothing else, we have to write, send an email, reach out to someone and say, this is not doing much. Um, awesome rec, Chris Bowen.
Well, it's just him talking, not been about all raises anymore and forgot to check on this.
Um, the pole that we've been waiting on since last year has been installed. Lighter fits and all the sound equipment has been, it's working properly. We've added.
No, it's not. I forgot to tell you this conversation, but Larry Baker called me today and the voltage on one of the wires is not anything. He can't figure out how it ever operated, but he's checking with the company that installed it twenty-some years ago to try to figure it out. He can make it work, but he said the sound's not going to clear.
And the guy called me at one o'clock this afternoon and it was all up and running before lunch.
It was running, but it's not, it's.
And, uh, I don't know if you're aware, we had some vandalism with some spray painting in the swimming pool before we filled it up. We were able to remove it with some, if you remember, and then prompted us to buy some additional cameras and recording equipment. Told the dashboard, never. And they installed all that stuff. But they installed all that stuff.
How's it, I can come along down there.
We're about, we're about to work on battery, uh, update this afternoon. The, uh, Ozark electric, I think if you want to, they've got an electric company over there. They installed a feed for it today. Electric is starting tomorrow. They've already installed the doors and everything on their facilities. And the plumbing will start by the end of the week. So we should have that, uh, operational, plus the first next month.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, it's coming along very well. And, uh, swimming pool is filled and operational. We have started up the contract, you know, rehab work last year. Scheduled for Thursday, I believe, this week to come and do training for all city personnel for the new UV equipment, things like that, that's all with the splashback. Uh, city crews are going to start filling up the waiting pool and the splash booth. Uh, make sure all the pumps are functional.
I got a question for many parts still on the, you know.
Yes, scheduled to be here next month. Uh, followed up with that, uh, vendor, and he said that it's scheduled to be here first week of June, and he didn't anticipate any problems that hold that off.
Are we, are we doing kind of lighting around that once it gets up, or is it just going to be a dark corner over there?
It's, it's going to be like the one that's on the park. Cause that's the only electric we have.
Right.
Is up in there with that north side one.
I'm just kind of worried about vandalism again over there. Once you get all this up, but I guess we'll just cross that, if you want to do that.
He's encouraging something with solar lights.
Solar light.
Yeah, the, the park grant itself doesn't allow any aerial, like, again, run underground, but.
Gotcha.
Uh, if the news available, the equipment that they installed at the water park seems to be working well, so they can, that stuff is just going to go all the way back to being possible. No.
Probably need to put them out so those.
Yeah, that's the one agenda that happens come out. They just remind you.
And that, we always wait until that to make sure everything is running. Were you here at baseball club? Was it, was it good out there?
It was pretty good. If it stopped raining, that'd be nice. Do I?
It's spring.
That's kind of soccer, I can add that to plastic again.
Soccer at the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Baseball comes on fall already.
I'm there.
Bottom of my wing.
Bottom of my wing.
You can watch the grass grow with the.
Right.
If you're bathing in the rain every day, you can watch it grow.
Do we have any more on the netting?
We looked at different options. Uh, I actually went into a baseball tournament, Phil Will may have talked about this. They had some covered, uh, canopies and stuff for their, uh, it actually provided shade. And, uh, and they were freestanding. And so I'm going to reach out to their parks and rec to see where they got them from and, and start looking at something like that. But, uh, same thing, quite pricey.
Yeah.
Because they have to have big concrete anchors in the ground or you do all of this. And there's a lot of rock in that area that Larry can attest to. So that is really hampered, you know, putting these things very tall. So we looked at different options, including that would actually pass the tube, the back top. It's not going to provide a lot of shade, but it would provide some protection. And that's actually pretty economical. So we just have somebody come in and fasten a frame that we would attach into, to the existing. And then set two posts behind each one of the leakers. But it would be confined to a twenty-foot section.
Sure. And that's something you take out like an aware combo, you wouldn't.
Yeah.
Get, get ruined. Wait, so.
So we could remove.
Remove it back down.
I think it'd be worth it to look for next season. Uh, I mean, we're close to finishing this season, but I think that long-term is a good idea to put some sort of sun structure up.
Please, Paul, the first one.
Basically, J C's busy. I'm not sure if we're sending the calls. Um, they're definitely up. Um, so there's no, no shortage of calls and services. Want to go out, J C? Yeah, I'm going to have two of the officers here tonight. I knew it was going to be a very long meeting. For painting and all of that. So I had also heard this, and, um, target for it is they actually receiving two lifesaving awards through, from a justice due for Narcan safe. That they conducted weird partnership, all officers who did the training period, Narcan model. Vehicles, um, and, and, you know, that's sad to do that we've used them several times, um. And a couple of those were pretty significant. If they, they wouldn't have been there, it would have been, uh, you know, wrong, right? Yes, one was right behind this, um, same with the fire guy. It, it, it does amazing, that's, that's. Um, so they, they do got two awards, we recognize one that wasn't here, well, I have here tonight. And also another officer, Oscar Bedina, who works night shift. Actually, I received two messages, either one from the mayor, mayor received one from the mayor of.
Oh, bring them.
Bringley. So he was actually off duty. Bringley had their own, and the, the school decided to have their own SRO. Their own place department school. Um, anyway, so, so their officer was at a game and apparently there was an occupation. Um, and just one of them, because they had their own, he's, he's the only SRO in the police chief that does this. So, uh, he was actually assaulted and by two, two individuals. So our officer was there off duty. Um, intervened and actually, um, probably, you know, you know, the, the injuries that their officer's quarter has sustained would have been much worse. He was literally being choked out on the ground by a male subject while dealing with another female subject. So their mayor was there seeing all that and witnessing that and basically said, hey, we're glad your officer was there to intervene in this. So, um, I said, he was off duty, but I say off duty, you're still never off duty, so. Um, and one last thing, I said on the DTF for we, we do have a DTF officer, I won't go into the detail names and what he looks like and what he drive, all that stuff. But, um, those guys do amazing work. Sometimes we don't hear about them. We always say, no, he's not here for, for a girl. He does both our cases. Anytime you get thrown in this county, you know, in businesses and gray row. They did some pretty big cases. I know this past weekend, I had information, pretty vocal information. He has stepped to two of the other victims and actually got five hundred and seventy-five grams of methamphetamine. Seven hundred and sixty, uh, oxycodone, uh, bentonoff pills, which we all know about bentonoff, that's only eight hundred bentonoff pills. It's off one subject. Uh, he got five hundred and seventeen grams of THC's, forty-four grams of cocaine. Long smokes up this, this was a bad, bad dude, so to speak. He's actually on federal probation. Will be in the way like he should have been forever. Um, that's just one of the cases that are limited. They weren't participating. A lot of the cases go from, they're all close to overruns in Dallas. They make huge, huge cases. Um, is, you know, we know that narcotics drugs are on our streets, but sometimes when you think of cases, our headquarters, managers, they even, you know, they're running on highway pretty, a lot of people, you know, like involved, like that. And that's drugs are going through, um, those men and women up there do tremendous, tremendous work for what they got, so. I think it's good to know, like I said, we can do sponsor mayor, let's do it, great, we get all that money back. But with us representing it, holding that spot, I think it's pretty significant. It should be, you know, spoken about. A lot of what they do can't just cover the nature of the nature of it. But, um, they do tremendous work, so I think it's worth noting.
One point out, if you don't realize, the, the police department and fire department have many, you know, you hear a lot of cities that they think they're swallowed by anything. I mean, that's, if I was, yes, I'd say that, because we can, I hear their, uh, officers. Oh, and they'll ask us, you know, he, they won't pay you. But I mean, I, I don't think the cooperation and the camaraderie from the police department and fire department. Let's see, there's a lot of places. It makes a huge difference on, on scene and, I think, around the community.
And, and, and that's definitely true. I come from Oklahoma, it's a different world its own, but I work for the, the sheriff's department, the deputy. Um, nobody got along with anybody. The other police department didn't get along with me. I mean, so all we do down here is it's pretty, I mean, we're lucky and fortunate and blessed, so. I think a lot of it comes from the support of the council. And so, I mean, I, even, even, you know, even going to that part, even with the trash guy, I mean, I mean, all these guys, everybody is just the, which is good to know when you, when you're running a city that all departments, Mr. Dick, it's always been, but, um, I think they're way bigger. It's pretty amazing, so.
Well, we moved a long-range plan, but as we move, I'll say that y'all had an accident a few weeks ago and the trash guys worked the traffic.
I think.
For them to deal with. So it shows you how it works. So long-range plan and pre-group.
Uh, well, we had a very long meeting from the other side. Uh, we already talked about Salem Meadows. We amended a preliminary plat for phase two of wide mid screens by Bates and Associates, which is, um, Mr. Coyle's addition. So essentially, when we approved that, they were going to build, um, townhomes similar to those that you find on like Rundle Road with the back access. They came to us asking to remove that back access because it was going to be so expensive. Um, the city and the plan commission felt like that kind of eliminated the usefulness of a cud. And essentially, what they were trying to do or what they would be left with is just really small lots, smaller than what any of our zoning ordinance is allowed right now. Uh, what we ended agreeing on with them is we were going to take the twenty-foot alley in the back, take ten foot off of that and add it to the front, which would create a thirty-five foot setback off the front. The concern was parking in very small lots and only being able to fit two cars in a driveway before they would overlap on the sidewalk, which we know is not allowed here. Uh, but by adding the ten foot to the front, they now will be able to park two cars, two cars deep, so putting four in the driveway. And we felt like that was a good trade-off. Uh, we approved a mobile eating cart, um, for Chalat Shaved Ice by Justin and Tiffany Thomas. They bought the shaved ice cart from the maze at, um, Magnolia. And they are going to allow them to park the food truck down there to do the shaved ice and they'll move around the sun. We were fine with all of that. Uh, we had two variance requests, one by Charles Gastineau to put an office building closer than ten feet from his house on Musket Street. In a very uneven lot and in order for him to, uh, meet all of our requirements, he essentially had to put this structure right in the middle of his backyard and he didn't want that. So we came up with a plan for him to be able to put it closer to his home. And then we approved a variance request by Kyle Lewis and a pill relief from dementia requirements for lots in unusual circumstances. He's wanting to place an accessory structure closer than eight foot from the property line due to the placement of a forward building, existing slab at one oh five North Quarter. He's a bass fisher and he needed a big old structure to park his boat and his truck. Um, and the structure was going to be larger than the one he had removed, thus needing a variance to put it back and we were fine with that.
You forgot the rates.
Yes. And if we keep having three-hour meetings, we're going to ask for a raise. I'm glad I was down with him. It was a very, actually, I will say, I wish you were there. But the, uh, builder for Salem Metal, Salem Metals, actually Meadows, actually commented how thankful he was that we discussed everything that was coming through and that we seemed to listen and work through stuff before just making a decision and moving on. And I thought that was really nice coming from a builder because they don't have to feel that way. Especially when we ask them to put in things that it didn't originally want to.
Just a quick update too on the zoning and planning stuff. I've been talking to Parker some. Uh, we're shooting for July to approve at least the planning and subdivision portions of that ordinance. A meeting with, uh, Juliet the next couple of days. We haven't submitted yet. And we're going to be working on the zoning maps. As I get information on how those are going to kind of come together, I'm going to share it with y'all so you can see. But, uh, the zoning map's all going to have to change, obviously, to meet the new classifications that are in the zone ordinance. So we've got to coordinate those two.
We're going to do something like that, wasn't you? With like something, do a preliminary thing you do.
That's the, that's the future land use map. This will actually will be, the zoning map is the regulatory map. You know, this is what it has to be, but it has to be adopted at the same time as the ordinance.
Gotcha, yeah.
I, I know theoretically you're just joking, but I want to know how do, uh, how do the city council and the planning commission get raises? Did y'all have to actually vote on your own raises? Does y'all have to make a motion? I have to make a motion? Well, I'll do some research and work some of the other towns of Dawn, and then maybe we can bring it up to topic one day. Same citizens, all the difference.
I'm looking to Lance today and they, they're still just waiting on, start the expansion. I don't know what's taken so long. I mean, because they were supposed to have started.
I don't know what's taking so long. I mean, because they were supposed to have started, didn't you say Brian in May?
Uh, no, it was well before.
Or June?
Like of last year?
Yeah.
Is our turn up?
I guess.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I said you had the architect last month, I mean.
Yeah, I was saying that.
So I know they're doing their work, but.
So they're just in limbo, white and.
It could be the architect.
Yeah, but that's all I've got because of.
Just where you're going to harden it all.
Up there. They have a lot of people to come in there. Increase.
Party a lot of back.
They have increased their.
Is that just back a lot? Does that fall on the city to provide upgrades and expansion for them or is that on their own?
It's, it was actually, the lease is between the school and the area agency, whatever it was. Whatever was at the time that it was built. I think they changed names.
Okay.
But the lease is between the two, those two parties.
Okay.
And the city has never invested anything financially in that property. It's all donations and voluntary.
So this is simply just a check in for our benefit?
We, we had to be the person that got the grants. That's, that's our participation.
I see.
They needed us to mediate the grant and distribute the funds for them.
Okay, cool.
So we're just a pass group.
Well, they're gonna be on space, I mean, I would assume very soon, so why not to be planning on that?
It's a long time.
Last and surely not least. Library, it's only gonna.
My image of the library, the decorum that you always have is the silence and the quietness. Now, don't go down there on a Tuesday. When Amanda has forty second graders and she's over there with the kids, I mean, they're just having a hoop. They just have a great time. And the exercise equipment that they have over on the east side of the building. I counted sixty-three kids out there playing on that stuff the other day, so it has come in very, very handy, so we did good on that one. Did real good. That's all I got.
Any announcements?
Is the reason you're considering to raise the line equation because Lynn is off term?
Yes, precisely.
They all have to speak for them, so.
Yeah. Did you have an announcement?
I, I, I even wanna do some follow-up, I could. Uh with the exception of Sue and uh Rick, I think I was able to uh give each of you a uh, an invitation to. Uh the temple of the house of our church, which is up in Bentonville, which is a big deal for us. I think I mentioned those y'all are current one is in Oklahoma City. So this is a really big deal. And you guys are being put on the same uh level as our governor and other state elected officers that were VIP tours. And I just wanted to get an idea before I left, cause I gotta let them know uh by a week from today. I'll just best make a catch of the body for I think going to everybody's house again and just get a sense of how many of you plan to attend. I have a six o'clock tour and a seven o'clock tour scheduled for this very people, also the other ministers of Pretty Grove. Uh on June the twelfth. I just wanted, if I could get a sense of how many of you plan to go. Rick, looks like almost everyone, um I don't know.
Your dinner was after, pardon? We heard dinner was on you after.
Why?
What'll be doing the sixth, I'm assuming?
Well, it's something, uh that's why I came, you guys and I, I wanna see what you guys prefer to do. Do you wanna do the six o'clock? Okay, so you guys can take the name and then it's like down on the seventh box, but. So pretty much everyone, and I know I'm Rick and and Sue, I have your invitations tonight, that uh unfortunately, Sue, yours still has had your predecessor.
That's okay, I can go by him. Um what is this to, uh, sorry.
Uh the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, which we have a, a worship uh building here right next to the library in the subway. Uh we have a, a temple, one of our temples, which is a little bit different place of worship. And it's being built in Bentonville with a house for the general public, which is, general public is June seventeenth through July the first. VIPs, which is this group, is uh the week of June twelfth and the twelfth, uh we get the first night, so um. I did a little uh work, make sure we got it, so uh anyway, so I have a plan on this. And I guess you guys will meet and probably draw up together. I'll probably meet you there, I'll probably be up there. Um but I look forward to it. I'm very excited, so thank you for doing that and I'll just plan on the, all the.
Thank you, I won't be able to make it. I have training in um Mount.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you guys. Thank you for.
Thank you.
I thought you was a stalker for a long time and kept grabbing by the.
This diligence.
Yeah.
Oh, you got breakfast coming up?
Which announcement? Glad you brought that up. June the third, the Masons will have another conference for the scholarship. So if Lynn, if you'll take care of that for me, I appreciate it. And everybody else show up. It's uh all you, all you carry. And uh the donations are accepted.
And six to ten. Right?
Yes.
Any other announcements?
Just looking for a motion to adjourn.
All in Vegas, say all.